Good evening and welcome to the November 4th meeting in the Concord Select Board. I want to remind everyone that our meeting is being broadcast and recorded. So the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda, on which there are town accountant warrants, minutes to approve from October 7th and October 21st, support for House Bill 3976 sewage spill notification, a proclamation for the Little Women Week, December 15th to December 22nd, and a number of one-day special licenses. Salt Box Farm, November 5th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., wine and malt only. Salt Box Farm, November 12th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., wine and malt only. Concord Educational Fund, November 16th, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., all alcoholic beverages. The Concord Market, on November 9th and 10th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m., all alcohol beverages. Concord Market, on December 27th, 6:00 to 11:00 p.m., all alcoholic beverages. And the Concord Players, December 7th, from 11 to, excuse me, from 7:00 to 11:59 p.m., wine and malt only. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the Select Board and Town Manager Citizen Recognition. Mr. Crane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend a resident and an employee who was also an employee of the town, Melissa Samard. We have a proclamation that we drafted, I'll just read it, it's brief. Unfortunately, Melissa was not able to join us tonight, but we were hoping to present it to her, but nevertheless, in her absence. Whereas, on Tuesday, October 22nd, town of Concord employee and resident Melissa Samard was in her driveway, unloading her car and spotted a fire on her next-door neighbor's porch, whereas Ms. Samard ran over to the neighbor's house and alerted them about the fire so they could evacuate the house. She then grabbed her garden hose and began to extinguish the fire. Whereas, the fire was most extinguished when the Concord Fire Department arrived. Ms. Samard's actions stopped the fire from extending to the house and prevented anyone from being injured. Now therefore, I, on behalf of the Select Board and the residents of Town of Concord, Massachusetts, extends the town's most sincere appreciation to Melissa Samard for her brave action and her service to her neighbors. Signed this fourth day of November 2019, Stephen Crane, Town Manager. Melissa actually works with Kerry in the Finance Department, and the chief, Chief Judge, was actually somewhat concerned that he was going to be displaced from his position.[181.12][181.12](Laughter). It was, I mean, it was a pretty heads-up, a heads-up play by Melissa, and I just wanted to acknowledge that it was a pretty special thing she did for those people.
That's fabulous, and thanks very much for getting that proclamation, and we all extend our thanks and congratulations to her. The next item on our agenda is the Town Manager Report. Mr. Crane again.
So, thank you. You have the printed report in the packet. The big thing is, this coming weekend, the weekend of 8th through the 10th, the crossing, the rail crossing in West Concord by Commonwealth Avenue will be closed for repairs. We have sent out notifications to the businesses and some of the neighbors. There was a site meeting on Friday, I was unable to attend unfortunately, but I don't know if anybody else went and saw, but we did notify the businesses of the meeting, the MBTA who is doing a project, and their contractor outfitted by the name of Keolis was there to answer questions. The work will be, will take place mostly at night, but they can't, unlike a road project where you can, you know, plate it and reopen it during the day, they're unable to do that in this project. We did ask them 10 different ways if they could keep it, if they could reopen it during the day, and they just simply can't. They fully expect to be done by evening on Sunday, and once they are done, the tracks will be upgraded. Some of the tracks are starting to age, and the approach to the crossing will be greatly improved with all-new rubber, the tactile rubber materials replaced. So it'll be a nice upgrade, but I know it'll have an impact on those businesses this weekend. Concord Police will be putting out detour notifications, I know we have the variable message boards out, so people just need to be mindful, taking a little extra time. If they have any questions, it's really the Tease Project, not ours, but certainly they can call the Town Manager's office or CPW if they need information about it. So, there is, a notice will be going out, if it hasn't already, about a bromate exceedance from Concord Public Works. And if you've seen, the first thing I want to do is just assure residents and water customers that you don't need to do anything, there's certain requirements that we have where if compounds, certain compounds in the water go past a certain threshold, there's a notification requirement, but not, Redding, for example, just had a boil order. This is absolutely nothing like that, you don't need to do anything, it's a relatively small exceedance. Bromate is a naturally recurring thing. There is, if you have any questions, there's information available on our website under, you know, conquerma.gov/bromate, B-R-O-M-A-T-E, or you can contact the Water and Sewer Division, 978-318-3250, if you have any questions. But I want to stress that it's not a public health emergency, you don't need to do anything, it's not a, I mean, if you have questions about how, if it could impact your health, obviously consult your physician. I was approached by a resident who, actually it's Keith Bergman, who also has a lot involved with MAPC through his prior hats as a manager and administrator, and he had noted that there was not an appointment to the MAPC, which I guess under MGL is a manager's appointment, and discussing it with him, he recommended that I appoint myself for a three-year term, which I agreed with mostly, it'll help me familiarize myself with MAPC, get to know, I think I'm pretty sure I understand the issues of the region because they're similar in most regions, but it'll give me a chance to really learn another aspect of our work here in Concord and how it impacts the region, so I did appoint myself for that three-year term.
You're here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Yes, I look forward to going back and out of Boston for those meetings.[431.03][431.03](Laughter). Highlighting the need for regional transportation improvements.
Yes.
In the packet, just as kind of FYI's, they did put the Middle School Sustainability Subcommittee presentation, and then I also put in the quarter one status report from the Regional Housing Office. So those are just FYI's. And then, I just wanted to mention that the delegation from the Nye, our sister city, was here last week, and in Long Meadow, we had a sister city as well, and we would entertain delegations. And, once again, it was just, we had a great meeting here with the delegation, and the translator did an excellent job managing the communications back and forth. One of the members of the delegation was a senior local government official in the Nye, so through the translate, we were able to talk a little shop, and I had the good fortune of giving him kind of a personalized tour of town, of some of the town departments, and, you know, it was a lot of fun, and I figured, not knowing any better, I'd try the stuff that I would think was fun, you know, go to the fire department, get in the engine, put on the stuff, and, which I think is totally cool, and turns out Takashi-san also thought it was totally cool, so it was a great visit, and I look forward to more visits with them.
It's a wonderful relationship between these two sister cities, and I can say that my family directly benefited from that, as my oldest daughter spent a lot of time going over there on exchange trips.
Are there additional questions for the Town Manager?
I just have one question for the Town Manager. Are you attending the meeting to vote yourself in office on Thursday? Because I'm covering that meeting.
For MAPC, or do you have to vote yourself in?
Well, there's an election, and so...[544.38][544.38](Laughter).
I think, no, I think this is the appointment to be the town's representative.
But I have a question on that.
Yeah, but I think, I think we all endorsed John Mangiari from Acton.
Right.
That's right. Okay, okay, so this is, this is a separate appointment, okay, I just wanted to clarify...
Each town has representatives on the commission, and so I'm representing the town.
Okay.
The issue is, that's a Town Manager appointment, does it need Select Board approval? I don't know what to...
I'm told no.
Excellent. Any other question?
I did ask that, but I was told that the statute says it's a Town Manager appointment.
Fabulous.
I had one question on the Regional Housing Services Office. Looking for the page, there's, okay, this is it. It looks like they're saying Concord is going to need more hours this year and next year in their budget.
Mm-hmm.
Can you comment on why that is, what's happening with that?
I honestly don't, I haven't, Liz sent that over last week, and I have not discussed it with her, so I really can't comment on it.
Okay.
It might have, it might have to do with the Junction Village project, but I suggest just give Liz a call, I'm sure she'd be more than happy.
Okay.
And I know the Planning Board is working on bylaws and things like that, the annual town meeting that would have some impact on what Liz does as well.
Might down the road, but that would probably be, okay, other questions?
No.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Chair's remarks, I do have a few. First, I want to recognize the passing of Nancy Beecher. Nancy was a longtime Concord resident and former Select Board member who passed away on October 17th. Nancy and her husband Norman, who passed away in 2016, lived in Concord since the early '60s and were very active in town government. Nancy served on the Celebrations Committee in 1975, the Select Board from 1984 to 1990, and the Light Plant Board from 1992 to 98. We're deeply grateful for her service, and we extend our thoughts and best wishes to her family at this time. Next, I would like to just indicate that the high school band is going to have a benefit concert on November 7th at 7:00 p.m. honoring our veterans, and the funds go to the Fisher House Foundation, which supports housing and transportation for returning military families. So I thought I would bring that to everyone's attention. I would also like to remind everybody that it's Veterans Day on Monday, and as usual, the town celebration will be at Sleepy Alley Cemetery, we'll convene at 7:45 and Parade, I don't know if it's called a parade, but the procession will move up to the top of the hill where there'll be a ceremony there where we honor all American flags that are no longer used by destroying of them profitably. I would also like to mention that we had a very successful educational program this last Saturday here in the townhouse. I want to thank in particular Jane, Kerry Terry, the Town Clerk, Carmen Reese, the Town Moderator, for being part of the program and helping put the program together, and also I'd like to extend our thanks to other members of the town staff who participated and made that event successful.
And anybody who didn't come but is dying to brush up on everything that we remembered and relearned, should, they can find the video of it on the Town Clerk's website.
Thank you. And finally, following on Stephen's remarks, in addition to our formal meeting with the delegation on Tuesday, I believe it was, and Stephen showing the head of the delegation around, we had a farewell dinner on Sunday at the Colonial Inn, which was very successful, and at our meeting with them here on Tuesday, they gave us gifts, and the gifts are some very delicious cookies and the likes, so I thought I would pass one this way, and after it gets to Jeremy, it can head out to you. There's no extra charge, it's...[825.32][825.32](Laughter).
It's worth it to come in person to the meetings.
Send this one to Jane.
It came with the price of admission.
It came with the price of admission.
Yes. So this is sort of a belated trick-or-treat.
Something like that. So that's the end of my remarks. The next item on our agenda, I think, is just a very quick update from the Town Manager IT Equipment and Data.
Thanks, Mike. We're aware of an issue about some equipment in the IT department that we're tracking, and we're investigating it thoroughly, and as soon as we have something meaningful to report on it, we will certainly do that, but just want to let you know that we're aware of it.
Bring it back here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And next item on our agenda is the Town Manager's presentation on the fiscal 21 budget requests. For those in here in the audience and at home, the budget process is going on now, and the process essentially is the schools and the towns prepare sort of preliminary budgets, share those budgets with the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee then continues their deliberation to set what are called guidelines, and that are guidance given to the towns and the schools about budgets to be consistent with what the Finance Committee believes is an appropriate expenditure level. The Finance Committee Subcommittee on Guidelines has set the tentative guidelines, and then the schools have then heard from the superintendent on her preliminary proposal, and tonight we're going to hear from the Town Manager and the Director of Finance on the town's preliminary budget. So, Mr. Fore, Mr. Crane?
Thank you. So I just wanted to present, kind of as a first snapshot for the FY21 budget process, the requests that departments have submitted to the Town Manager's office and the Finance Department as kind of the first blotch. This is, this is where I'll be working with Kerry on kind of preparing the Town Manager's recommended budget for the Select Board's consideration and presentation to the Finance Committee. I want to thank Kerry and her department for the work they do, I mean, you can, you can see, it's a lot, as you know, and I went, I gave you the one-pager, I figured that was preferable to this in the packet, but just to kind of go over the kind of snapshot summary of the requests, the Finance Committee's guidelines, which they approved on October 24th, are seeking a 2.5% increase in the budget. The FY20 budget that we're applying that to was $28,706,648, and so the FY21 guideline is $29,424,314. So that's an increment, if you will, an increment of increase of $717,666, so $718,000. We break it down a little bit from there, and then if you look at the department revenues, that, well, that yields basically a shortfall, if you will, I hesitate to use the word shortfall, but a difference between the guideline and the requests of about $800,000, that's $791,635. That's, sounds, that is a lot of money, but in the context of a $30 million budget, it's, it is something that I think we can probably achieve without a reduction in services. You have, the two, the things to bear in mind are that 160, so it's a million five, it's a million two in new requests, and then coupled with that is then $400,000 in capital, in capital that's funded by the annual, by the general fund, as opposed to borrowing, and then $164,000 reduction in transfers or credits that was scheduled as a part of initiatives implemented over the, like, last year, including new firefighters and the middle school SRO, so as part of the transitioning. So, in the context of $164,000 already being out of the pot, if you will, before we even started, you know, $790,000 is, goes down by that amount in terms of, you know, the gap, if you will, in terms of unplanned things. So, one of the things that you'll notice in, or hopefully notice, in the Town Manager's budget will be, we're reorganizing, I say reorganizing, we're really consolidating building maintenance line items. Each, each department has building maintenance line items, and as you know, the Town Manager Wayland and Kate Hodges have been building a standalone facilities department, which is really blossoming into an excellent department of the town, and in the furtherance of, in the further development of that department, we're taking building maintenance expense line items from the, from the departments and putting them in the facilities department's budget. There's a couple of things that are set aside from that, though, utility costs and custodial costs will remain in the department's budget, in part because each department does custodial services somewhat differently, and in year one of, in year one of this, it was, it's too much to consolidate that, but we're going to keep looking at that to make sure we're getting the best, the best value. But, regular run-of-the-mill maintenance will be funded through the Facilities Division, and they will also perform the work. In the short term, we are going to continue to track the expenses by building, so we have an accurate accounting of what each building is costing us, it's just going to be under one department now. Again, I think we'll be able to meet the Finance Committee's guidelines, we will have to push back on some of the requests and maybe look at some of the existing expenditure levels, and maybe tweak them a little bit, but I do think we'll be able to get there. And, the other thing is, in terms of the budget presentation, one of the things that I did was, like Concord, Long Meadow had a, something I'm actually very proud of, I think a four-year and counting award-winning GFOA budget best practice document. It's formatted differently than the existing Concord budget, but I showed it to the, I showed the Finance Department Long Meadow's version, just as kind of, hey, this is what we did, and Kerry and her department have kind of embraced the format and are going to maybe modify the existing budget format to better reflect, not better reflect, but to reflect somewhat of a more cover-to-cover read that the Long Meadow budget, I think, represents. So I wasn't trying to put the stamp on it, I just showed it as an informational thing, and they have kind of run with it a little bit, so I'm pleased with that, and I think, hopefully the board will see the revised format and enjoy it as well.
New Concord format.
Yes, the new Concord format, the improved, the improvement on the Long Meadow format, of course. So if you, I don't know if this went out in the packet, but we do have a list of the major requests that add up to about 1.2 million. A couple of the things I just wanted to point out, classification and compensation study, there's been a change in law, the Pay Equity Act, that I think most municipalities really have a need to do, most, like, most municipalities, it's been a while since we've had a compensation and classification analysis for the town. So, the Human Resources Department has submitted a request of $40,000 to bring in somebody from the outside and really do that analysis. That's, that's, I mean, all these things are priorities, it's just what priority is going to end up making the cut. The Fire Department has, they have an interest in creating, not new positions, but elevating a few positions to refine their leadership structure, their command structure, so that's something we're looking seriously at as well. That's about $100,000 to, I'm sorry, that's $44,000 to do that, to create basically a lieutenant position on each shift, and that's really in large part because there are two separate stations, and they're commanded from one station, so it, like I said, adds a little bit more responsible, or leadership to each shift. There's been, there's some positions, new positions that have been requested as well from the IT department notably, and then we are carrying a $10,000 appropriation for the 250th celebration, as kind of a, I'll say it's not a placeholder, but it's, we know we're going to have to start preparing for that, so we want to have some, we'd like to have some funds in the budget to do that.
And you want to remind folks who are listening and watching how far in advance we're doing this?
It's five years, yeah, five years, yes. But we don't want to be, we want to be well ahead of the game, I think.
Right.
There's also, as folks know, the FY21 budget will include the November, the November 2020 presidential election, so obviously that drives up the cost of the clerk's office each year. But I know that the Planning and Land Management has requests for additional positions as well, something we're taking a close look at for, for...
Land management, are said.
For land management, yeah. Yeah, and there's a $199,000 request for additional technical support and town reports at town meeting, although I'm not as familiar with that request. Oh, the electronic, that's right, the moderator has discussed wanting to do, or I think she wants to implement electronic voting, so we'll be working with the moderator on that request as well. So like I said, I think at this stage of the game, I think the requests, each, each department's request, I think by and large is reasonable. I didn't read anybody's budgets as really going for broke, if you will, which is why I think we'll be able to put something together that meets the guidelines and continues the outstanding services.
Previous budgets, and I can recall that the single largest item almost always is just salary increases, and I don't remember the arithmetic, but $700,000 would, in my quick calculation, would seem to me to sort of, if you gave even a modest increase of 2% or something like that to employees, that would wipe it out.
Right.
We're, we are putting in, we are carrying, and thank you for mentioning that, we are carrying an appropriation for the salary reserve account of $500,000. There are four, three or four collective bargaining agreements that will be effective July 1st, so start of, start of FY21.
Right.
So that's a big factor in carrying that amount, and then whatever else we do for town employees. Yes. So we, and I don't know, in, again, since this is my first go-at, I don't know what those costs are compared to, like, year over year, but working, working at the Finance Department, we feel like that's a number that is kind of a placeholder, so we have the appropriation when we negotiate.
And then we have, I've forgotten unfortunately the date, but the second time we're going to hear from you on the budget.
Would it be, I believe it's the, is the 18th?
Two weeks from now.
Yeah, I'm on this calendar to present it on the 14th to the Finance Committee, and so it'll be the following...
Kerry, when is their, when are they scheduled to adopt their final permanent guideline? Is that the 14th as well?
No, they're actually pushing adoption to the first Thursday in December.
In December, that's right, they did that in the meeting.
I think it was scheduled, or something like that. Yeah, the schools, right? Yeah, I think that was to accommodate, that's later than normal, I think it's to accommodate the delivery of the school project.
Yeah, they, I recall that they did go over their calendar fairly carefully to make sure that they were able to do that. Also, questions?
Did you mention a number for the IT additions that they're asking for? You may not have.
I don't recall that you did.
They are looking for a position, we have it right now at $71,000, but there were a number of requests I could, I'd have to, I'd have to find it in here, but...
That's right.
Yeah.
Can I look at this?
Sure.
Well, the one thing, going back to the guideline, that it may not be a substantial amount of money, but something like a presidential election, which is, you know, not something you deal with on a regular basis, it would seem to me that you might talk to the Finance Committee about not including that as part of the guideline, it's a one-time. I know that this year there's going to be, every year we have to decide how to allocate the school budgets, based, regional district budget based on population, and this pendulum swings back and forth, and a couple of years ago it was like a half a million dollars, as I recall, and I think it's something like three.
279.
Yeah, three this year, and they've set that aside, in determining what amount of money they think they would allocate to the district. It seemed to me something like a presidential election, or even a town meeting, which, you know, would be something that isn't a standard operating procedure, we might want to ask them if that, two could be set aside when they...
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent point, because we want, we want to make sure that we're adequately meeting the needs and the expectations of the community. I think as we go through this and try and look at areas where we could reduce or not increase to meet the guideline, if it gets to the point where it's just getting too close to home, if you will, then I think that we would go to the Finance Committee and ask for some disposition on those things.
The presidential election is probably not a huge amount of money, but I would not like to see the wages for our non-military employees, we have to be cut because we had to allocate, something like that.
Well, I mean, following that same logic, I mean, we're already putting money aside, for instance, for the 250th celebration, because that is a very unique event, and we'll be carrying a lot of things associated with that for Concord. So are, as Mike's pointing out, the presidential election, so, you know, there's certain episodic...
Sure.
Oh, great, any other questions?
Oh, yeah, and I should say, in one of those things, it'll, it will be a recurring thing, but there isn't, there is an increased funding request... but there is an increased funding request, for example, library expansion. That's an expansion project that is a partnership of the Board of, the corporation and the town department, but the expansion will require, obviously, more resources, and so that's one of those things where that's not entirely a town, you know, generated thing, because it is, the building project is a partnership with the Board, so that's one of those things that's kind of a tweener.
So is that increased for utilities or for staffing or?
Yes.
And that's already going to be needed in July, or maybe partway through the year?
I think the second half of the fiscal year, I also think that Kerry Cronin would like to kind of get a start on it, and find qualified people and bring them in and, you know, get them familiar with it, so if you make the hiring when the paint is drying, you're already starting off behind, and so I think it does an interest in bringing the person on, kind of pre-funding it, if you will, so they're integrated into the library operations when the new, when the expansion opens.
Right, well, we look forward to the, I'm sorry.
And you mentioned the capital expense, you're going to be wanting to increase that over what we've been funding, or?
We are, the capital requests, you know, go in accordance with its own target, 7%, which I think is 2% of general fund and 5% borrowing, and so we're looking to make sure we hit those targets as well. We won't run out of options to fund.
Does that capital request count as part of the FINCOM guideline?
Yeah.
It does. Okay, so even though you have to increase it to make the 7%, it sort of puts you in a bind that way, right?
Well, I mean, I think the town's done a good job funding in accordance with the policies.
Right.
And so every, so if you look at the kind of monolith of the town's budget, if it all slides 2.5%, in accordance with this guideline, that means the 2% of capital goes up 2.5%. Not to get kind of twisted around there, but I think you see what I mean, everything kind of moves up, so.
All right, additional? All right, and the next item on our agenda is review of wastewater management plan and housing development on Giraudland.
So, just, yes, I'm feeling kind of bound up here, sorry.
Those big binders aside.
Yes. So I do, Marcia is here and I would invite her to join us, she wants, there's a memo in the packet about this issue, as you know, there's, there's plans to build a affordable two-family home at the former Giraudland. And one of the issues that is significant for both the creation of the units and the sustain, I say sustainability, I don't mean environmental sustainability, I mean the lifecycle cost sustainability for the occupant is a costly septic system versus a connection to the sewer system. And the Public Works Commission is meeting on the 14th to consider whether or not to connect this property, these two properties, and so we're looking for some input and potentially endorsement from the Board of this connection, I understand it's, the timing of it is kind of tight because of the, the Public Works Commission's meeting schedule, I don't know their views on it, there's some information that's summarized, background section in the memo as well, but if you have any more detailed questions, I would encourage you to ask Marcia.
Good evening.
Good evening, Marcia Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management. It's unusual to come and ask you for support for this, however, it's a unique situation. The Public Works Commission operates off of their Integrated Planning Policy Statement, and they will take into consideration affordable housing as a reason for granting waivers of their policies. In the case of Giraud, we took a small portion, if you recall, at town meeting, the funding was predicated on providing a small portion of land that could be subdivided from the larger Giraud land, and then combined with land owned by the Concord Housing Authority. That process has been moving forward, the land has been subdivided, we had an appraisal done, we're going through the process of advertising in the Central Register, the value has been established at $22,000. What is unique about this situation for the Public Works Commission is that we have taken an existing lot that is served by town sewer, and we are expanding that lot, or increasing the area of the lot in order to build one additional two-bedroom house. That is unique for them, we, it has frontage on the road that has that sewer, but we would be tying into the existing sewer that serves 365 Commonwealth Ave. So I felt it was important to bring this to your attention, I know that you had support for allocating that land going to the Housing Authority at town meeting this past year, and I could rely on that, but I wanted to bring up the facts to you this evening so that you at least have that to consider. The other piece is that the Concord Housing Authority is seeking funding of $300,000 for construction of a house from the Community Preservation Committee, and they need to make their decision fairly soon before the warrant closes, because they provide a recommendation to town meeting. They would like some assurance, I think, that the sewer connection will occur, because the lot is so small and the property is so close to Warner's Pond and Steep, that we have identified an area for the house, but there really isn't room for a septic system to go on the property. So that's, all these pieces are coming together, I think that with the information that I have from town meeting, from your support of the $50,000 request from this past year from Free Cash, to help with the engineering for the property, that there will be sufficient evidence for the Public Works Commission to find in favor of the request, however, I wanted the Board to be aware of all these situations, and if you wished, that you could provide your support.
And within the existing plan, they have the latitude of granting an exception?
Yes, under their Integrated Planning Policy Statement, the creation of affordable housing is one of the reasons why they would grant that waiver.
What would be the argument, Marcia, opposing granting the waiver?
The fact that we're looking at an existing lot and we're adding land in order to increase the number of bedrooms is not within the four corners of what the Public Works Commission's policy is normally, so it's a little bit of outside, it's, they have granted waivers in the past for 129 Old Bedford Road and for 405 Old Bedford Road. One was a Concord Housing Trust property and the other is a Concord Housing Authority property, but in those cases, the land was, already had frontage on the sewer system, and the first one, the Concord Housing Trust property at 129, it was increasing the number of bedrooms, and they granted that because 100% of the units would be affordable or Concord affordable. In the case of the Housing Authority property at 405 Old Bedford Road, it was a four-bedroom house that existed there, and they created four units of one-bedroom each, so it didn't increase the load on the sewer system.
Okay. Does anybody else have, so again, if they granted this, are they concerned about precedent setting? I'm still trying to understand what's the downside here.
That was their concern, that was, the concern is taking an existing lot and adding land in order to increase the number of bedrooms that could be served.
Even though this is purely motivated by the affordable housing codicil.
They would like all, all the support that's possible, the Concord Housing Foundation has provided a letter of support, we have the town meeting votes that authorize the land to be divided, we have your vote of this past summer that allocated $50,000 to the Housing Authority, I think we can make the case that, you know, that there is support for this project, but having icing or providing a bow on top of this present that we are providing to the Public Works Commission for their decision would be, is the reason that I'm here this evening.
And have they discussed it?
They have not discussed it, we're providing the information in a memo this Wednesday for their consideration at their meeting next Wednesday. I have had conversation with the Director of Public Works and with the Superintendent, Water and Sewer Superintendent, Alan Cathcart.
And?
They think that everything will be in order, so.
Just to your comment about what's the downside, our sewer plant does have capacity issues and within our permit, so, and I just want to, even though, the reason why the policy exists is to protect the plant and to guard against overcapacity, and so while this one on its face may not seem like a big deal, it's, you know.
It's one more piece.
It's one more piece, and so I think that, I mean, I'm certainly supportive of it, I think it's, it makes sense, given all the factors that Marcia laid out, but when you say what's the downside, the downside is it cuts against what they've been fighting to protect for a number of years through this plan.
And do we have a sense of just how close, how close we're shaving it?
No, I don't, but, I think that there is capacity, that they balance that over time, and at some, there will be, at some point, they will have to look at expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, they have examined and they do have alternatives, or to go back and seek an increase in the amount of effluent that we can.
Yeah, okay.
So that they have options identified.
Okay.
It will cost a lot.
We've also set money aside for.
And as they, as each connection is made to the sewer system, they pay that share of what it will cost to increase the capacity.
But this one's not going to put it over the top.
No, no.
Right.
All right, well, what is your thinking, Susan?
Well, I noticed that when you're looking at the Integrated Planning Policy Statement, the first three, this particular project meets the first three criteria that they're talking about, creation of affordable housing, development that's located in the Town Village Center, development served by town sewer where it helps meet other town goals, so that's pretty strong.
So you'd be supportive of that?
Yes.
Well, you know, I think that at town meeting, you know, citizens spoke to this issue, we've, there's been a lot of work that's gone into putting many pieces together for this, and I'd hate to see it not be supported by us at this point. I would also comment that at a recent meeting I went to, there was a suggestion that at some point they may want to bring water onto the Giraud property, so, and they were already mapping out a potential avenue for how that might happen, a sewer line and so forth, so I think it would be unfortunate if we didn't meet both of the purposes for this land, you know, if that were to come to fruition and this had not.
Carrie?
Well, I'm definitely in support, and I have the same question you did, I couldn't figure out what the downside was, and so thanks for explaining that, but I think it's, this one house won't put it over the top, we just keep our eye on it.
I'm completely supportive, it's within, it's not only the will of town meeting, but it's also, we set the guidelines up specifically in the Integrated Planning Policy Statement to allow for something like this, so would, is our support intended as verbal or as a letter, I mean, what is, however you wish to provide?
I would suggest that, that we draft a letter in support of this and that we deliver it to the committee, and if everyone is in agreement to that, then I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I move to draft a letter of support for the wastewater management plan and construction of an affordable housing unit on the former Giraud land at 367, I believe it is, Commonwealth Ave.
And could you add, authorize a chair to sign on behalf of the Board so we can get it off?
So amended.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, thank you, Marcia.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Next committee liaison report, Susan.
Oh, already, we're there, huh? Okay.
I can go first if you'd like.
No, I got it here, I'm good.
I don't have any this week.
Now we're done. On October 22nd, the Planning Board met in the hearing room here to discuss further 1440 Main Street, and it ended up that the developer had submitted information, but it was so close to the meeting, there really wasn't time to review it by the committee, so that's going to be discussed on November, the 26th, Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and that's going to be a Harvey Wheeler to continue the discussion on 1440 Main Street. They also talked about 13B Com Ave, which is this little sliver of land, if you're standing on Com Ave looking at Neshua Bakery and there's those parking lots and the gas station, there's a little piece that they are proposing to put a two-story multi-use building with, you know, commercial space and residential, so that was the first time the Planning Board had heard that, and they gave them some feedback and they'll be back again. Conservation stewardship restriction, Conservation Restrictions Stewardship Committee, I don't know why I'm having trouble with that, also met on the 22nd, and they are, they continue to monitor the conservation land parcels and block them every, periodically. On October 29th, the Trails Committee met, one of their, there are a couple of items they talked about, one was bicycle access on trails, it wasn't motorbikes or.
Mountain bikes?
Mountain bikes, it was bicycles, and warning, and continuing the discussion from the previous meeting about developing code of conduct, and they referenced one that the National Park had put together for that purpose. They also talked about, there's a trail that runs through Sleepy Hollow, and it used to be found, there was a big tree that used to dictate the trail, the tree is gone, and so the Cemetery Committee, because it's on their land, will be discussing this Wednesday night, but in the meantime, the Trails Committee said, so they support the decision of the Cemetery Committee to determine the location of the trail, not subject to determination of private property owners, because there's been some back and forth, I guess with one of the butters about where the trail is. October 24th, the Middle School Finance Committee met, October 28th, the Building Committee met, and the good news, as the Owners Project Manager reported, there was good news and bad news, the good news is there were 18 proposals for schematic design, and the bad news is there were 18 proposals for schematic design. So they, they met a couple of, the Design Committee has met for many hours since then, or since they received the proposals, and they've narrowed it to five firms. They're going to be starting to interview those five firms this Wednesday, starting at 8:30 at the Ripley Building, and they have a format, so there's about an hour for each, each one with a little break in between. I wanted to say something about Economic Vitality Committee, well, first let me say, West Concord Advisory, this is for all listeners or people in the audience, West Concord Advisory is looking for two members, and I do, this reference is what we were talking about last meeting, I have a write-up that was sent to me about, you know, what they're looking for, do I forward that to Erin in CCU, or how do I, where do I put that information?
I think, to get it to Erin and have her put it up, I don't know whether she has created a site for the. has created a site for the committee yet. Maybe she could have a newsflash too, I don't.
Yeah. Wondering, we talked about it being submitted to the Concord Journal, and I'm wondering if it goes to Jeremy to take care of that?
I mean vacancies in general.
Or the clerk's office.
Sure.
Or both.
Sure, but let's get it gathered up all of it, so we just have one that goes out. You might get her to get some of that newsflash, ready, getting ready to get started by the.
And then my last item is on Economic Vitality Committee. We still are looking for two representatives from historic or cultural institutions in town to serve on the committee, and also two at-large members. Oh, Marcia's not here. That, I'll be hearing from the Planning Department about who they would like to, are going to approach to have serve in a planning capacity, either a staff or they're designated, which could be a planning, former planning board member. So we're, we have eight, we're five away, and I have actually one person I'm in conversation with, which would be in at-large position.
Good, so progress?
Yeah, slow, but yeah, yeah. It's really the historic and cultural piece that, and I've, I've made some overtures, but I guess I've got to do a little more there, huh?
So for that piece, do those people have to be residents?
That's what, yes, unless we go to, we talked about that possibly not being the case, but we want to exhaust the residents, and my thought about those institutions like the museum.
Right.
And the umbrella is that they, there may be people on their boards that are Concord residents that, not necessarily on their staff, that would be willing and able to, to do that. So that's how I'm kind of spreading that.
I think we should exhaust.
And 51 Walden too, same idea.
Residents on the committee before return.
What about Alcott, the?
Yeah, I've made an overture there.
I think that, yeah, but I would think the umbrella or the museum is such a large problem.
Right.
Linda?
Okay, two weeks ago, Mike and I addressed the Joint Committee on Revenue at the State House for Article 25. Last week, I addressed the Joint Committee on Housing for Article 26, following up on town meeting business. I attended the CPC meeting. They have completed their initial rounds of interviews with all the applicants. They have a number of unique issues this year in terms of, two, the projects coming, as we have talked about briefly before, coming from faith groups, and so there's, it's been, those have been preliminary reviewed by town council, although additional material may be coming in on this second applicant related to that issue. The other interesting thing that's happening for the CPC committee, and it, it reminds me that we should probably be, take a lesson from this in one way. There are two members on the committee who have had to recuse themselves, it's not a legal recuse, they really have had to absentiate themselves from two of the projects because of conflict of interest. That was fine when initial presentations were made, but now that particular committee will go forward with deliberations that includes all of the projects at one time. And so there is concern about their participation in that process, and yet if they don't participate, there's two major, yeah, two major voices and committee members not participating.
Is this the first time we've confronted this problem? I mean.
Uh, to the, I'll, I'll just say that it's the first time that I think there's a general awareness on everybody's part that that's the situation we're involved in.
This was brought up at the educational forum.
Right, right.
Specifically as an example.
And hasn't the school committee had to deal with this issue where maybe one member has a conflict about one little piece of the school budget, but then when you go to adopt the whole budget, that person would come back in for that vote?
I don't know, but we ought to get a clear ruling for the town.
Yeah, so the individuals can individually go, speak to the ethics, you know.
Attorney, you can call the attorney of the day.
Attorney of the day, they can individually do that.
On behalf of the committee.
But I, yeah, but I think.
Committee itself needs a rule.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the, the ethics things, any ethics decision or consideration accrues to the individual member, not the committee, and so.
No, but if I, I think the issue is, I can have a personal conflict of interest on an item before the CPC and be out of the room and not participate in that discussion. And now they're going to vote the whole package, am I.
And deliberate them, and, and the, and the awards are.
Are you in or out? Are you out for the whole, or are you backing for this?
And the awards are in.
The individual really needs to make that request, because it depends on the circumstances and the nature of the conflict too. Sometimes, sometimes you can just file a disclosure that says, with the clerk that says, I am, I have this, you know, conflict, or I have this, you know, relationship, but I think I can, you know, execute my duties as a CPC member objectively, and then you submit that to the clerk, and that's usually good enough. I, whoever, whoever the person is, should really contact the attorney of the day, and then if, if the attorney, if the attorney of the day says this really is a committee-wide decision, then we go from there. But nine times out of 10, it's usually the individual that has to do that.
Well, Stephen, can you on behalf of the, us sort of, meet with whomever you need to meet with and get something to the committee so they have something that explains exactly what they're supposed to do?
So, so I'm the liaison to that committee, and I, and I can relay what you're saying. But I just want to also comment that because there is, former case law and the anti-aid amendment involves two of these projects, I feel like there's another level of sensitivity here, and it will, the attorney of the day's response, let's assume that both individuals give all the information, including the anti-aid component and, you know, you know, let's assume that they both go forward with all of that information. There's still an issue of the, whether or not the, the, whatever the attorney's, of the day's ruling is, there's still, I think, a concern about how it appears.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, under the conflict of interest law, appearance is one of the standards.
Right.
Is one of, is one of considerations, and that's where, I, I think it would be helpful, and if they want to contact me, I can talk through whatever the issue is.
John's the chairman of.
Yeah.
I think you should ask him to reach out.
I would say, but having been through this, like requests for like determinations and things that cannot be made by a committee on behalf of someone, that person has to make their own request.
But I think that we're also, there's a larger question being asked, which is, in terms of guiding the CPC going forward, because this won't be the first time. There will be others, or the last.
Not the first town that's encountered.
Right, so some, somewhere, somebody must have come up with an approach that doesn't then, for instance, negate a quorum, or.
Right, like the rule of necessity, how do you invoke it, when do you invoke it? I think they can answer that at the state Ethics Commission.
All right, so, I'm sure you'll go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I also attended the Hanscom Area Towns Committee, and I'll just note there that Bedford did adopt the 5G policy, and their stated reason for doing so was to give them time to then further study it and amend the policy.
Adopt the Burlington?
The Burlington's policy, and they did it just to give themselves more time, so that they.
Remind everybody who's listening and watching what the Burlington policy was.
Burlington policy was to give the town a process for working with vendors who wanted to come in and add 5G capacity to telecommunications in town.
Well, let me, let me comment that I, a citizen had written me to ask again if this could be on our agenda, and I told her I thought it was premature, that we certainly don't even have 3G and 4G completely around town yet, but.
Anybody trying to use their cell phone down knows that.
If, if Bedford has also done this, perhaps we should at least, whether we adopt it or not is one thing, but perhaps we should get this on our agenda and get us all up to speed on the issue.
Up to speed on 5G.
Go home.
See what you did there.
Henny I'm going to select. So, do you think that would be a?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, yeah.
I don't think we'll do it on the 18th, as I recall, that's going to be a pretty full agenda. We also have the Assessor coming in that night, but let's get that then on maybe our first meeting after Thanksgiving in December. Thank you.
Just continuing with hats, BJ Dunn, the Superintendent of the Minuteman National Park, had the main agenda that night, talked about a number of staff changes that they've been dealing with. They're closing their visitor's center earlier than usual on November 1st this year. They have seen, year to date, they've seen a 9.3 increase in the number of people who have attended the park, which is, last year was, 2018 was 1.4 million.
Where do they attribute that to? Is there anything that they pointed to that would cause the increase?
No, they were asked that, and, no, there was no definitive answer to that, as I recall. They have money, yeah, yeah. And then, and they're gearing up like others for the 2025 celebration. I attended the Concord Housing Development Corporation meeting, and among other things, they spoke about additional steps that are happening with the 930 Main Street affordable housing lot that was processed, that's been approved, and the, and also they're, they were working on the land development agreement for that property. A number of us, I think, attended the League of Women Voters CPA panel, and Terry was one of the panel speakers there. Acton was also represented, and Lexington was represented. It was extremely interesting. We all, our bylaws for each of the CPA agreements is somewhat different, but more in common than not, but there's just enough differences between each one. It was interesting to hear both Acton and Lexington's, Acton first said that they've increased, they're increasing their emphasis on community housing, just because of the housing shortage across the state. And Lexington commented at one point, the representative from Lexington commented that it's just understood that when people come with a request for open space, that they're looking at community housing or other uses with that open space. So in other words, that's where they are in terms of the needs of the town. I, I just thought those interesting comments, and others may have much more to say than than that. Also went to the Effective Governance Training, and I'll just comment, having been to several of them, as many of us have been, it really is, the guidance that is being given and the issues talked about at this meeting have really evolved, and I think that there are many nuances now to committee role and implementing some of the open meeting law and other conflict of interest, et cetera, regulations. So I really encourage all the committee chairs and committee members to take the time to look at the video from the meeting.
Thank you. Jerry?
Oh, I didn't finish, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I've got so much tonight.
Pause.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll be quick. No, I'm good.
Mine, huh? Okay, on the 23rd, I went to the local cultural council, and surprisingly, they had 32 applications this year for cultural grants, so they're happy with that, but they have a lot of work to do the next month or two sorting through those. And on the 24th, I went to a very interesting CSEC meeting, and the biggest issue that came up was the library. And one part of that discussion in particular kind of concerns the Select Board, in that several of these capital projects that have to do with sustainability, the library and the middle school are the two that come to mind, where you have one bucket that's going to be paying for the capital costs and borrowing the money. In this case, the trustees are fundraising, and then the town pays the utilities. So you have, I mean, we're all, basically, we're all the same people, we're the library users and the taxpayers and the ratepayers, and, but still, the way we have it financed, it's interesting because the costs are going to come in one bucket and the savings in another. So there was a lot of concern over that in terms of, how do you look at the payback on sustainability? Because even if you have a great payback, it's coming in a different place. And we're going to have a similar issue with the middle school, because we have the debt service in the town budget and the utilities in the school budget. So this is something that came up at, at the CSEC meeting. I did go to the Nanae delegation meeting, which was very interesting. I would love to visit there sometime, it was great. And yes, I was a speaker at the CPA meeting, that was interesting on the first. And on the second, yeah, the training was really excellent. As a person who's been doing this kind of work for over 25 years, you think, oh, this again, but no, I always learn something at these meetings, it's incredible. And then I'm happy to report that tomorrow is our first meeting of the Capital Planning Task Force.
You're here.
Right, thank you. And I will ask this time, or is that all?
Yes.
Jane?
Well, I, I went to the PEG Access Committee meeting, and as many of us do, that meant I couldn't be at the White Pond Advisory Committee meeting, so I just want to quickly report what I heard from the Chair of that. They are making real headway as a neighbor, as a neighborhood, looking at their own septic issues and the impact of that, that, those septics on the pond's health. And I suspect that we will hear more about that in the future, but it's just really impressive to see the initiative that's being taken, acknowledging that there are some older homes there that are not actually being captured with the data that exists right now. And so as a community, they're going to try and, and monitor that and at, at least have the data, you, you know, the data collected so it can be added in, because it may, it may actually offer, shed some light on why is it, you know, why are the algae blooms going in the direction that they are, given the amount of time and attention the towns put on, on this resource, and will be putting more going forward, because now we own the, or are, and are managing the, the beach. So I just want to give, you know, tip my hat to the committee for all of the work they're doing. Meanwhile, I was with the PEG Access Committee, and I brought copies of one of the documents that they wanted us to focus on. Really, the big takeaway, and it's a slightly linkier report from a liaison perspective than many, because it was very clear in that meeting, there was a lot of requests for guidance, in that the, the PEG Access Committee is a committee of the Select Board, and there's concern that they, they're still trying to figure out what their, what their role is. And we, you know, we discussed the mission as it's described, but I think that there's a real interest in having greater specificity and clarity. I highlighted that, you know, we, we formed, as Minuteman Media Network came under the town's management, the PEG Access Advisory Committee, which predated, as I was pointing out. PEG Access Advisory Committee, which predated, as I was pointing out, um, that actual, that transfer. But the goal is to really focus on advising the town and the select board and the town manager on, on content that could be, could be enhanced in all three of the pieces of PEG Access, public, educational, and government. And there was concern raised at this committee meeting that there's a lot of, uh, timely, um, airing of, of government pieces of, um, broadcast, but that the public and the educational pieces are lapsing. And, you know, as a committee, that we're lucky to have the number of, of real veteran experts in this whole field. Um, there's a lot of interest in sort of getting into the details on why is that happening? What can we do? And how should we do it? And that's a little, it's, it's tough in a new department, in a new town department, because the timing of what the town can, um, make happen and the interest in seeing all that happen don't necessarily connect. So one of the things I wanna ask, um, that we all do is think about, um, the goals that they put forward and see how we can provide some greater guidance to the, um, to the committee to think through their approach. Um, and I think that's something that, that we don't certainly need to, uh, go through tonight.
No, but let's, um.
But let's, they're gonna be on the agenda for the 18th. So I wanted to preview this now so that we can be ready to think that through and, and discuss it with the committee there.
So Jane, are these things involved? Are these the goals? And are these, are they the things they've been doing under that?
These are their ideas for how you would implement those goals.
Right. So the things on the, the goal on the top, those are their goals. Is everybody?
Okay. And again, this is self-administered, so.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand how this works.
Um, and I see several committee people in the room and they may wanna, uh, make their own comments later. Um, I'll just add my own kudos to the Effective Governance Workshop on the, on the second. It was, um, a lot of fun to, to moderate and as always, I learned a lot. And I, as I've said, as I spoke to Cara and I, I said on, um, Saturday, I wish it was required of every member, especially, you know, sort of, you take your oath of office and you put the date, the next date of that, that, um, training in your calendar because I think it, it would just enhance everybody's participation. Um, and, uh, again, I'm always awestruck by the, um, the depth of knowledge we have, uh, in our town clerk, in our select board, in our town moderator, and in the people who attend and ask questions. It was really impressive. I went to the free ride and drive electric, uh, EV event, which, um, I don't know if anybody else here attended it, but, um, I got there a little too late to actually sign up in time to, uh, to drive any of the choice vehicles, but everything, everyone I, I spoke to was having a, a very good time. Um, and I think that organizers are to be complimentary. And that's enough for me.
Thank you very much. Um, as I said, I don't really have any liaison reports, but I do wanna sort of remind everybody that on Thursday at 7 o'clock here in the townhouse, um, the Finance Committee meeting is going to be about sustainability. And this has got nothing to do with energy. This has to fiscal sustainability. You'll recall for a number, a couple of years now, they've been trying to identify a way to determine a sustainability approach to town budgeting. And so they have done that and, uh, they're gonna have a, I don't know if it's a formal public hearing or it's just that evening's Finance Committee meeting is devoted to that. Uh, but for those of you that are interested, I think it would be probably worth your while. And I'll give a little, uh, headline to the league as having a, on Saturday, the 16th, from 10 to 11:30 at Harvey Wheeler, a program on which Ms. Bates is gonna be a member. And I see Cynthia Rainey is in the back and the town moderator and Tarlan are talking about how to run for public office. So I know you'll all wanna go to that. Uh, it should be pretty, uh, pretty interesting. And so that's on the 16th. Um, so next, uh, committee nominations. Linda?
Oh, can I, can I interrupt quickly?
Sure.
With my own, um, forgetful moment. The other thing that, that I did attend was the, um, a Ed Fund or a, um, a joint, I'm forgetting the exact, um, programmatic sponsor at the schools on vaping. And it was not only very well attended, but it reminded me to put in conflict with our next, uh, select board meeting, the first public hearing on the, uh, the regulations that the, the Board of Health is starting to think about on vaping and tobacco and flavored tobacco products will be also held.
Is that gonna be in the hearing room?
It's gonna be in the hearing room. So this is gonna be a busy place on the 18th.
Good. Thank you. Linda?
Committee nominations. Gavin Morrissey of 38 Aurora Lane to the trustee of town donations for a term to expire May 31st, 2022. Don Renner of 39 Revolutionary Road to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2022. Court Booth of 144 Wright Road, Concord Carlisle Regional School District Representative per committee charge to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2020.
All right. And committee appointments.
Hugh Lauer of 100 Kais Road, Cynthia Rainey of 80 Hunter's Ridge Road for the School Committee Designee per committee charge, and Elise Woodward of 379 Garfield Road to the Capital Planning Task Force for a term to expire April 7th, 2020. Cato Anderson of 14 Park Lane, Mark Martinez of 66 Alfred Circle, Deborah Stark of 98 Commonwealth Ave, John Boyton of 72 Chestnut Street, and Stephen Verrell of 415 Wheeler Road to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire on May 31st, 2022.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Do we have any? Kai? Nick?
Mr. Pappas, we, uh, Julia Road, uh, let's see. This is actually a comment about budget, although it won't sound like that to start, um, because I'm gonna talk about transportation, uh, which was figured prominently in the most recent long-range plan, uh, in the year for a focus on transportation is in time to find it. And I didn't hear anything to make in the budget about it.
And I'm hoping that the town is going to have some resources in this budget devoted to transportation, at the very least so that we can begin to collect data, possibly bring in some consultants to help us figure out what our situation is and what to do about it. I think it's personally, I think it's premature to put a person in the budget, but, um, 'cause I don't know who would hire, what we'd be looking for. But I do hope that that is going to be in the budget somehow. The town needs to devote resources to it. And if we miss this budget cycle, we're going on about 15 or 20 years since this issue showed up in the previous long-range plan.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there other public comments? Yes, sir?
Paul Jameson from 419 College Road. Just to make a comment about the emotional aspects of the Estebrook Road suit and why the suit is extremely important from my point of view for the whole character of the town.
Pull that microphone a little closer to you.
Um, I think the town, in, in the town, we believe that all the citizens are equal. But when one walks down and looks at the Estebrook Road and considers what's happened, it's as if equality goes away and we're now in a more feudal world where wealthy residents can control what the rest of the town does. There, all the residents of the town have already lost half their rights relative to access to Estebrook Road in the sense that the number of parking lots has been halved in order, and I recognize that was done in an attempt to work out a compromise with the residents, but it really wasn't successful. And in terms of solving the, the, the conflicts. And we're now in a situation where it seems to me, I call this Estebrook Road as a feudal area of town because we have wealthy lords at the end who wish to control the access and tell people what they have to do to, instead of, uh, following a town road, and I'm calling the trail, the Estebrook Road, they are imposing conditions on people in the town to suit their preferences. And I feel this is very emotionally concerning and in a sense affects the town in that area. So I urge you to keep, uh, pursuing the suit with, with all sorts of vigor. I was a little concerned when it appeared that one claim was being dropped. And I understand maybe that claim isn't critically important. I don't really know the, the legal validity of, or the, I can't evaluate the legal tactics, but I was concerned. And I think I represent a number of people who feel we're dealing with a situation in the town where moneyed people are controlling the rest or wish to, some of them are wish to control the rest of the town. And it's very concerning to me. And I become very angered as I bicycle down Estebrook Road and think about, whoops, there's only half the parking spots that there used to be. And there's that gait, which just raises my hackles.
Thank you. Are there any additional citizen comments? Yes, please. Uh, the one maybe behind you down or had her hound up first, if you don't mind. Good evening.
Hi. Marsha Schloss, 86 Hillside Avenue.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here to propose the town no longer renew the Crocolo Cheese Day proclamation, which publicly sanctions and provides police support for the, this annual cheese parade. While known to be a festive event, the sanctioning and use of public funds toward this event is ultimately antithetical to Concord's citizen-backed demand for greater sustainability, the ecological kind, and climate action. It simply sends the wrong message. We have hired a director of sustainability and we encourage rooftop solar, electric vehicles, better heating and cooling systems, even drinking our own tap water rather than single-use water bottled in plastic from the hinterlands, but we're falling short with addressing food. Climate scientists tell us that animal agriculture is one of the largest contributors to climate change, more than all forms of transportation. They tell us we can't get to where we want to be unless we move towards eating more plants and less meat and dairy. The Amazon is being burned to feed and graze dairy cows and other livestock, and hundreds of environmentalists have been murdered trying to protect the rainforests. All this information is widely disseminated in reputable journals and news sites. So I feel it's embarrassing for a town that gave thorough to the world to now be glorifying a huge imported Italian cheese wheel. And I feel environmentalists are not gonna smile on Concord for this. The, the cheese shop is a private business and has a right to promote their product, but I'm asking that you stop the proclamation glorifying it and no longer expend tax dollars in support of its occurrence. So I have a few relevant articles, if you care, and I have, um, petitions that some.
Please give them to Jeremy. And, uh, I did know you were going to be here this evening, uh, and encouraged you to be here. Uh, this item will be on our agenda on the 18th. Um, we will take it up under the agenda item of the proclamation.
Great.
So that's the way it'll be presented on the agenda. And, uh, you're of course more than welcome to be here to have your point of view aired. Uh, it will be a select board, uh, decision, and we have not discussed whether we're gonna entertain public comments, but this can be a part of the public record. So thank you for coming. Are there additional pub, yes?
Thank you. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I speak only for bookkeeping, a, a minor issue, uh, given what we've just heard. Uh, it would have been really helpful today if the budget information had been online, uh, because Nick Pappas would have been able, for instance, to know if there were transportation additions for costs. All of us would have been able to hear your conversation, uh, with, with greater intelligence. And so I, we would just appreciate it if that kind of document were available in advance so that we would be as, as prepared as you all are. Thank you very much.
Well, just let me say, I, I agree with you, but just let me say that there really wasn't a budget. Essentially, what we heard tonight was what the Finance Committee had laid as a guideline and the request that the town manager had received from the various town departments.
Town departments.
And he hasn't yet.
Hasn't formulated a.
Asked of putting a budget together. That's the 18th.
I understand that.
Will be online.
But what people are requesting is a great help, you know, if we can see them.
My first remark was, I agree.
You're, you're exactly right. My language was, is appropriately corrected. Thank you very much.
On the 18th, uh, we'll make sure that, uh, a summary of the budget, not the whole enchilada, but summary of the budget will be up.
Sure. That, just to, and I appreciate the feedback. I do. The, the first official draft is the town manager's draft of the budget and it is not written yet. So I, posting something short of that would be some premature.
Additional public comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.